Welcome to the session on distributional national accounts, or on distributional aspects of the national accounts. My name is Theresa, I will chair this session and we have three speakers on this topic. The first one being Sean White, he will start on the topic of inequality indicators consistent with UK national accounts, followed by Andrew Aiken on decomposing democratic national income for the UK. And I will go last and present some results of our distributional national accounts analysis for Germany. Every speaker has 20 minutes and there will be a Q&amp;A session after each presentation. So if you have questions, please go to the Q&amp;A box below here and propose a question and please state your name and your affiliation. And in the Q&amp;A session, I will call your name and you will be unmuted so you can post your question. And with this, I would say we could start. Sean, do you want to unmute yourself and share your screen?
Thank you, Theresa. Just share my screen now. Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Sean White and I lead the Office for National Statistics work on household finance statistics development and broader measures of inclusive growth where this work on distributional national accounts falls. So I'm presenting today on work that ONS has been involved in for a couple of years now. And along with my colleagues who worked on this, we're going to be looking at how we can develop indicators of poverty and inequality that are consistent with national accounts. Start with a quick disclaimer. What I'm presenting here are very much experimental research findings and work in progress. They're not official government statistics. Most of what you see today has been presented at an NBER conference earlier in the year. The full paper for that conference presentation is available from the below. So at the moment, it's a draft chapter that's going into a proceedings from that conference, but you can still download it and have a look at the draft version. So I think it's worth starting by quickly going over why we might want to use indicators that are consistent with the national accounts and what value do they add. So first, such an approach aids international comparability. So while there are standards for micro statistics in terms of income, such as the Canberra Handbook, in practice, the approaches and concepts used can sometimes vary considerably across different countries. And by contrast, the system of national accounts framework potentially offers greater coherence for making such comparisons because of the buy-in from very many countries on this. Secondly, the possibility of distributional indicators that are consistent with economy-wide totals is also beneficial in terms of coherence for users of statistics within different countries. And finally, the regularity of national accounts is also a positive, particularly in countries where there may be a number of years between different surveys. And similarly, the timeliness of national accounts data is generally considerably greater than that of survey estimates, allowing for the potential of more timely measures of poverty and living conditions. So in recent years, there has therefore been a growing body of work seeking to produce distributional national accounts, including that coming out of the OECD Eurostat Expert Group on Disparities Within National Accounts Framework, which we had been involved in here in ONS. And this really provides the basic building blocks for the work that I'm presenting today. So the expert group has developed a methodological framework to derive distributional national accounts estimates on the basis of micro data sources. And this consists, as we can see here on the right, of five broad steps. So the first of these is to adjust the national accounts totals so that they refer to the same population as the micro data. The second step is to map the micro data variables onto the national accounts concept. And when I'm talking about micro data here, I'm talking about micro data from household surveys that collect data on people's incomes, living conditions, their consumption behaviour and so on. So the third step then is focused on bridging any gaps by imputing for missing elements and scaling the micro data to the adjusted national accounts totals. And in the fourth step, on the basis of these aligned results, households are clustered then into quintiles or other groups of interest before we then derive relevant indicators in the final stage in step five. So it's a series of steps that we go through and we're going to describe today some of the activity that we've been engaged in around some of these different steps in the process. So first of all, I talk about micro data coverage. So again, I just stress this, when we're talking about micro data, we're talking about the raw raw survey data. So when following this progress, this process, sorry, mapping the micro data variables onto the national accounts concept sometimes reveals substantial differences in recorded amounts between the two. So this figure shows that when doing this for the UK here in 2017, coverage rates for income varied from 23% to more than 100%, with similar variability for consumption. So these low coverage rates present us with a challenge. So the third step of the methodology I described just now is to impute and scale the micro data to the adjusted national accounts totals. And where these gaps are large, this does necessitate sometimes some fairly large assumptions in doing that, in doing that importation. Now, the report of the Atkinson Commission on Global Poverty highlighted two broad sets of reasons why such coverage differences could occur. The first is differences in recorded amounts, which may reflect issues with survey coverage, non-response and under-reporting, as well as any national account measurement error. And the second is definitional differences reflecting the different purposes really to which the two sources are traditionally used for. So this paper presents some work to address both sets of reasons to produce data that allows the production of indicators of living conditions and poverty that are, as I say, consistent with the national accounts. So turning first to differences in recorded amounts. So there are widely recognised issues of under-reporting of incomes at the bottom of the distribution, especially at least in developed countries like the UK and US. So we know that in the UK that this in part reflects under-reporting of social security benefits, something which is highlighted when comparing survey and admin data, for instance, which we currently only have aggregates for, by the way. So the figure on the left here shows the percentage gap between the two for different benefits in place within the UK, both here in terms of the number of recipients or the caseload and the levels of expenditure. So we can see quite quite significant differences in some of these when we look at things like income support, child tax credits and winter field payments, for instance. So what we've done is to adjust the micro data, to take account of this under-reporting. Because of the time, I won't go into details of these methods in detail now. But very briefly, the available evidence suggests primary reason for the gaps is the non-reporting of benefits received by some recipients, rather than those who do not report receipt or are underestimating the amounts. So the main focus of the methods we've used is on allocating benefits to those not in receipt, doing so on the basis of their personal characteristics, both by applying benefits eligibility rules and also using a logistic regression model to get at this non-reporting. And this chart here shows that once we apply these measures, the differences between the micro data and the administrative data outturn figures for expenditure here are virtually eliminated, which is a pretty good result in terms of this work. These adjustments for social security benefits mainly affect those on low incomes, of course. But of course, there are also widely recognised issues with incomes at the top of the distribution. So yesterday, my colleagues Dominic Webber and others presented on new methods to deal with the under-reporting of top incomes. So I won't go into a lot of detail on that now. But just to recap on that, this shows that, this chart here shows that in the UK, it's really only in the top few percentage of percentage points of the income distribution, especially in the top 1%, that we really see differences, big differences between the survey and administrative data. So the methods used for adjusting the top income, very briefly, is to, and in terms of the using this within the distributional national accounts work, is really to apply the same top income adjustment that was included in the paper yesterday and builds on the work by Stephen Jenkins and Richard Burghausen and others. So this used the so-called Survey of Personal Incomes, which is an administrative dataset comprising a sample of individuals potentially liable to UK income tax. And you can see some of the detail in the slide there. I won't cover it in a lot of detail today. So once we've done and worked through those different adjustments, this chart shows the combined impact of those top income and social security benefit adjustments on the coverage rate of the micro data. So this includes, for example, on property income, wages and salaries, mixed income, social benefits and current taxes on income and wealth. So as a consequence, while some importation and scaling is still necessary, the amounts of income involved on where that is necessary are sometimes considerably smaller, therefore reducing the impact of the assumptions that then need to be made. Although there are some gaps that still remain, mainly reflecting imputed items and those where no micro data equivalent might exist. But a lot of those tend to net out in the calculation of disposable income. Just going to touch on definitional differences. So as highlighted in the Atkinson Commission reporting, a second key reason for the differences between surveys and the national accounts aggregates is in the conceptual differences that exist between them. And these definitional differences reflect to a large extent different purposes and user needs. So micro statistics on income and consumption view transactions from the perspective of households, whereas national accounts aggregates need to take a broader macroeconomic perspective. So for example, inter-household transfers are important for many households and included in micro statistics, but are not considered within a macro framework. And by contrast, while important for national accounts, FISAM or financial intermediation services indirectly measured or financial transactions, for example, between banks, are not directly relevant from the perspective of households, considering their own economic wellbeing. So this tends to get excluded from micro statistics. So whilst there are considerable advantages of using measures of inequality and poverty based on the national accounts, conceptually, it is the micro statistics framework which arguably best reflects the household perspective and so the impact on people's wellbeing particularly. So therefore-
Sean, you have five more minutes.
Five more minutes, yes, okay, I think I'm just about on schedule. We've therefore developed what we call a cash basis measure of real household disposable income, which removes a number of imputed transactions in order to be as consistent as possible with the definitions and concepts used in micro statistics. And as highlighted in this chart, cash basis, RHDI, is slightly more unequally distributed than the standard measure of RHDI. It also has a slightly different pattern of growth over the last 30 years, which is not included here, particularly around the 2008 financial crisis. So let's look finally at measures of inequality and poverty. So if we start looking at the the S80/20 ratio or the ratio of total income received by the 20% of the population with highest income, the top quintile, in other words, to that received by the population in the lowest quintile. Then looking over the period from 2003 to 2017, this chart shows the ratio calculated both from the original survey micro data and using the cash-based national accounts-based measures described above. So from this, it's clear that while the absolute level of inequality is lower in the distributional national accounts measure, both series do show a similar trend with a fall in inequality in the years immediately following the recession. So however, in more recent years, the gap between the micro and macro series has narrowed somewhat, reflecting a slightly more pronounced bounce back in inequality levels in the national accounts measures. Another inequality-related measure is that of shared prosperity, which again is one of the World Bank's twin goals and also an SDG indicator. So this is operationalised as having growth rates of household income per capita among the bottom 40% of the population, but then higher than the national average. And this chart provides a measure of shared prosperity for the UK based on household survey data for both the 40% and total population figures and using annualized average growth rates over the five-year period. So you can see that some of the differences that emerge looking at that particular measure. This chart presents the national accounts-based version of the same indicator for the same time period. So as might be expected, both versions display some clear similarities. So in both, the growth rates for the bottom 40% and the total population are at similar levels at both the beginning and end of the time period. But both, and both show a falling growth rates around the time of the financial crisis, particularly for the overall population, while the growth rates for the bottom 40% hold up slightly better during that period. But there are quite big differences as well. So around the 2008-13 period, the national accounts data suggests annual income growth for the bottom 40% was closer to that for the overall population and lower than indicated by the survey data. Similarly, in some of the most recent periods, the national accounts-based estimates suggest that income growth for the total population may have outstripped the bottom 40%. And finally, if we look at poverty based on a relative low income measure, so the orange line here is taken from the UK's official statistics, whereas the blue one is calculated from our distributional national accounts data. And this shows for the period 2003 to 2009 that while the share of people experiencing relative low income is lower in the national accounts-based measure, the trend seen in the two series is broadly comparable overall, with a fall in the relative poverty rate between 2006 and 2009, as you can see. However, in the following years, the two series do diverge with official micro stats continuing to see fall in relative low income rates between 2009 and 13, while the national accounts data suggests a small increase over that same period. So very quickly, some conclusions. The first thing I would say here, what we'd really want to communicate is that the national accounts-based indicators of measures of the distribution of income can provide some valuable new insights and improve our understanding of this, of this important area. And I'd suggest that such indicators can draw strength from the national accounts in terms of coherence, comparability, frequency and timeliness, whilst retaining the micro statistics focus on distributions and experiences of households. But there are some practical and conceptual challenges that still need to be addressed. So this work is is definitely still a work in progress. We've had to slow this work quite a lot during the COVID period due to staff being moved on to other areas. So there are still some major gaps that you can see there on the slide that we need to look at. Longer term, we want to try and continue to develop the importation of key income and consumption variables, particularly looking at pension approvals following Andrew and Martin's methodology from 2018. Improve the coherence of micro-macro data through the direct use of admin data is something that we're looking at. We're looking at admin data across all of our income statistics at the moment. But there's definitely some benefits from doing that. And we'd want this to be more timely and frequent. First thing really is to, is to build on the work that I presented today and publish it as an ONS publication, which is our first and main priority at the moment. And, and start to carve out an inclusive growth agenda within ONS that is based around this methodology. And from there, move towards now-casting techniques that we've developed elsewhere and look at the feasibility of producing quarterly now-casts using this kind of approach. So that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much for listening today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. We already have a few questions, so I would right away hand over to Arun Adwani of the University of Warwick.
Hi, thanks very much. It was a great presentation, I learned a lot from it. I had a couple of questions. The first was, you mentioned sort of one of the possible reasons for differences between the national accounts and the micro data is sort of how the national accounts are built themselves and whether, I guess I have a question, whether you think we should treat them as a gold standard where the underlying data that was used to build them are all perfect and that's the right thing to be capturing? Or whether some of these you might be there? The other question I had was in terms of timeliness. I guess one other issue we have sometimes with the national accounts is perfectly sensibly, there are revisions to it, to them, and sometimes they go back quite a long way. So should we be thinking of this as now, our measure of inequality should just be regularly being revised in a way that we don't typically have when we use surveys? Thanks.
Yeah, good questions there. Clearly, we want to be as consistent with the national accounts because because of the framework they provide for the UK in general in terms of economic statistics, whether they're the gold standard. I think when we're looking at some of the differences between the micro and macro data, we have to be quite open-minded really. And yes, it will be something on the survey side that is causing the difference in many respects. But it could also be that some of the ways in which the national accounts estimates are put together are directly causing that kind of mismatch, if you see what I mean. So I think we need to go into it with an open mind and try and explore how the different measures are put together, rather than just take a national account total and assume that that's going to be completely correct. So I think we need to think more about how that data is put together. Because that can help the development of the, of the national accounts going forward as well. So I think there's, you know, there's a win on both sides there. In terms of whether we should adopt this as, as, you know, the kind of new measure, as it were, I think, I think we're away from that at the moment. As I said, really, we've not really published this through the ONS yet. I think we have a lot of work to do still to make sure that we've covered all of those outstanding issues that I alluded to at the end there. And yeah, I think that, you know, for the moment, it's still a work in progress and a wait and see on that really. So I wouldn't want to kind of go as far as that really now.
Okay, then we have a second question. I think this has to be the last question for your talk because we only have four minutes left. And it is by Martin Weel.
Thank, thank you very much, Sean, for a very interesting presentation. There are a number of questions I could ask, but no, I was puzzling how far you think it's actually reasonable to say you're talking about the experiences of households if you don't take account of public services like health and social care. Certainly, the discussion that we see in the press suggests that people see these as a very important part of their income and imputing figures for these would presumably give a rather different result.
Yeah, it's, it is an important area, totally take your point. And we, we are looking at that more and more. Just to give you some context, this work has been on hold more or less since March. We were planning a lot more development work around some of the issues that you've raised in the past yourself around DNA. But since March, we've done very little on it because we've had literally no staff working on this at the moment. But we have a kind of checklist in place of issues that we want to look at as we go forward. One of those is around how we deal with things like health and education. Another is around how do we deal with deflation? And you, you've very kindly talked to us about that before yourself and provided some details on that particular issue. So I think that we're some way off really from a perfect solution here. Whether that would solve the problem of making it something that is, is completely in line with, you know, how households are experiencing inequalities is still a bit of a moot point, I think, because there may, there may always be some gaps that we're not covering in that respect. But it's certainly something that we're working towards. Sorry, that was a really fudged answer, but that's probably the best that I can do at the moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you for the insights and thank you for the questions. I would hand over to Andrew. Sean, could you unshare your screen? Thank you.
Thanks, Theresa. So this is joint work with Martin Wheel. And it's called decomposing democratic welfare. It's just a comparison of Atkinson and Sin. So just the usual disclaimer from the ONS. And I should point out that this work is quite preliminary. It's very early. So we particularly welcome any comments that you might have. So as is generally well known, conventional measures of GDP interpreted in welfare terms ignore the distributional impact of any gains or losses of output. So if we look at just the growth in GDP, it could be that the gains have gone equally shared amongst everyone, or it could be that gains have gone simply to the very rich. So there are a number of distributionally sensitive measures of income and income growth that have been developed, for example, from Tony Atkinson and from Martin. And I'm going to talk about those in a bit more detail in a moment. And then previous work with Martin, we've produced a, what we call a democratic measure of household real income growth. And this is essentially the average of the growth rate of the real income of each household. So it's the average of the growth rates rather than the growth of the average. So essentially, this is the geometric mean of nominal income growth deflated by a democratic price index. And the democratic price index comes from essentially Sig Price, 1958, who first developed a democratic price index. So essentially, this is a price index that takes into account the spending patterns of an average household rather than the conventional CPI, which is plutocratic in the sense that it uses total spending so that high spenders are going to have more influence on CPI compared to low spending households. And it turns out that our measure, the geometric mean, is a special case of Atkinson's inequality aversion measure. And the democratic price index we use has been developed by ONS. And we've extended that to take into account consumption of public goods and also those provided by INPISH, nonprofit institutions serving households such as universities. And then in more recent work, we've allocated the whole of national net disposable income from the national accounts to households. So we've done similar work to what Sean has just presented, allocating, for example, undistributed profits, interest and dividends income to households in the Living Costs and Food Survey and also allocating pension fund investments to households as well as public goods and various other bits and pieces. And we would do a number of, we obviously have to do some imputation there, as Sean just highlighted, there's discrepancies between what we see in surveys such as the LCFS and what we see in the national accounts. And we've used some imputation methods that draw on other sources of data such as the HMRC survey of personal incomes data and also the Wealth and Assets Survey. So basically, the income concept that I'm going to be talking about in the rest of this presentation is national income. So social welfare functions are something that economists use to represent preferences over how income is distributed across individuals. And the two welfare functions that I'm going to, that we're looking at here, Atkinson and Sin, Atkinson and Sin can both be multiplicatively decomposed into the part that comes from the growth in average income and the part that comes from the change in inequality measure. So if Y is our social welfare function, then we have that mu average income is then multiplied by one minus the inequality measure. And then the growth in social welfare is the next term, the next line here. So we've got the growth in average income and we've got the growth in the inequality measure. And so the second term on the right hand side here is essentially the difference between the growth in social welfare on the left hand side and the growth in average incomes. So you can think of this as being the growth cost of an increase in inequality. So it's the amount by which growth would have to be higher to compensate for an increase in inequality and still provide the same level of welfare growth. So as I said, we're looking at Atkinson and Sin to the two specific social welfare functions. Obviously, there are other functions that you can consider. Sean just showed some different welfare functions in the previous presentation. So the Atkinson inequality index is simply one minus A, where A is the Atkinson indicator, and that's a function of rho, and rho is a measure of inequality aversion. So essentially, this is about, is describing how much income you would be willing to give up to make income more equal. And then we have the SIN measure. So this is Sin's measure of real national income growth from variously 1974, 1976. And so this is essentially one minus the Gini coefficient. And he shows that essentially, this is, the welfare is based on weights to, weights given to households that are inverse weights. So if you have thirty million households, for example, then the poorest household is going to get a weight of thirty million, whereas the richest household will get a weight of one. So the Atkinson index becomes more sensitive to changes at the lowering of the income distribution as this inequality aversion parameter rho increases. So we can think of a couple of special cases. One special case is when rho is equal to one and then equally distributed equivalent income is simply the geometric mean income. So in this case, everyone is getting the same income growth. Another special case is when rho is equal to zero and the Atkinson welfare function simply reduces to the arithmetic mean or average income. And then for this measure, this is, as I've already highlighted, is based on the, is based on the Gini index, which really focuses its attention around the center of the income distribution. So we can think about the weights that are imposed on individuals from these different social welfare functions. So if you look at the graph on the left hand side, we have mean income, we have the SIN measure, and then we have the Atkinson measure within inequality aversion parameter equal to one. So I've made these graphs based on some generated data. So this is not actually, this is not based on actual data. Obviously, they do depend on the actual data, but this is log. So this is derived from the log normal distribution with a Gini coefficient of around point three. So if you look at the green line, this is the horizontal line. This shows that the weights for every person along the income distribution is the same. Everyone gets the same weight. It's a horizontal line. Whereas if we look at the mean income, as you can see, people at the higher end of the distribution get far more weight. And that's what happens by construction when we just look at average growth. Whereas, and people at the low end of the distribution receive a very small weight. And then the SIN measure, as I said, gives more weight to people at the, also gives more weight to people at the lower end of the income distribution. And you can see that actually, for the log normal distribution, the SIN measure is actually quite similar. The weights are actually quite similar to the Atkinson geometric mean case. And then if we look at the graph on the right hand side, again, we have the mean, which is the red line, the Atkinson, which is horizontal. And you can see what happens to the weights when you consider different inequality aversion parameters. So if we're not, so if we're quite averse to inequality, then we might have a parameter, for example, a two, and this is the orange line. You can see that that gives very high weight to the low end of the distribution compared to the top end of the distribution. And conversely, a parameter of point five, you see there is more weight to the high end of the distribution. And as the inequality aversion parameter approaches zero, then the blue line would simply converge to the red line and we have the Atkinson becomes geometric mean. So we can write down these social welfare functions. So on the left hand side here, we have the Atkinson welfare function. And if rho is equal to zero, so the top line shows this for rho not equal to one. And you can see that if rho here was equal to zero, then this would simply reduce to average income. And then the second line on the left hand side, if rho is equal to one, then we have the welfare measure equal to the geometric mean of income. And then on the right hand side, we have the SIN welfare measure. An important point here is the one that I've already mentioned. And we have that the the weights given to households based on the inverse rank in the distribution, if we're ranking people from poorest to highest. So then we can decompose these welfare functions into the effects of both prices and quantities. So we can assume that there is an aggregate price measure P and that there's a quantity measure Q, which is real income, such that the welfare measure is simply equal to P times Q. So essentially, we're taking the welfare measures from the previous slide and multiplying here by P. And similarly, on the right hand side for the SIN measure. So then we can differentiate these. And this gives us the bottom line here on the left hand side and the right hand side. This essentially gives us the weights on the expenditure shares. So the gamma, I forget the little W thing in the bottom line. Omega is the expenditure shares. And then we have the weights on these expenditure shares. And for the Atkinson deflator, the expenditure shares equal if rho is equal to one. Whereas for the SIN deflator, the expenditure shares are again based on the inverse rank of people in terms of their consumption. So for example, we could construct this from the Living Costs and Food Survey by ranking households by their expenditure shares to construct a SIN deflator. So I need to point out here that we haven't actually constructed this SIN deflator yet, but that's on the to do list. So in terms of decomposing, I mean, there's a number of decompositions we can do. So what I'm going to show you here is simply decomposing the Atkinson and Sin into the part that comes from decomposing the welfare, growth in welfare into the part that comes from the growth in the average income and the part that comes from the change in inequality. So for Atkinson, we have that the Atkinson inequality is equal to the ratio of the geometric mean and the arithmetic mean with log utility. And then we have that the growth in log geometric mean is equal to the growth in the Atkinson inequality and the growth in the arithmetic mean. And so we're going to deflate both the GM and AI using our democratic price index. And we would deflate the AM, the arithmetic mean, using the plutocratic price index.
Andrew, it's five more minutes.
Okay, thanks. And similarly, to decomposing SIN, we have that the change in growth in SIN is equal to the growth in the average income and the change in one minus Gini. So we can plot both the growth in the geometric mean, which is the Atkinson measure for the special case when rho is equal to one, and against the growth in the SIN measure. And so that's what we have here. So each cluster of dots here essentially represents a different year. And the reason why there's a cluster of dots is because some of the imputation that we do is stochastic. And so when we create our measures of national income, we do some, we have to run some simulations because of the stochastic computation that we do. And so these results here are based on about a hundred simulations. But you can see that basically, the dots are fairly well clustered around the red line, which is the forty five degree line. So there's quite a strong accordance between the SIN and Atkinson, which going back to the hypothetical theoretical graph that I showed you at the beginning with the SIN measure and the horizontal line for the weights for the Atkinson measure, we saw that they are actually quite similar. So perhaps that this is not that surprising. So this just shows that the growth in our deflators, which are fairly similar on average over this period, the plutocratic measure rose less than the democratic price index. And then in this graph here, these graphs here, we have the green bars, which are the change in social welfare, which in this case is the geometric mean. And then this can be decomposed into the part that comes from the change in average income, which is the red bar, and the part that comes from the change in inequality. So you can see here, for example, on the left hand side, this is the nominal terms that the, for 2009, for example, that the arithmetic mean fell a lot more than the geometric mean during the recession. And that inequality, the blue bar here is actually positive in 2009. So this is saying that inequality fell in 2009, when the blue bar is positive. So it seems so that the inequality is the difference between the change in the geometric mean and the change in the arithmetic mean. And so essentially, in 2009, the change in total welfare, which is given by the green bar, has been reduced by the fact that the arithmetic mean fell by such a large extent. And then on the right hand side, we have the same thing, same decomposition, but in real terms. And, you know, and obviously, the deflation is quite important. So you can see that in the early period here, income, both in the social wealth, yeah, was generally negative, generally fell, and this was driven by large declines in average income. And the picture for the SIN decomposition is very similar as I've already shown with that previous forty five degree line graph. So, I mean, so yes, I mean, they are quite similar. So we can say, we can see that the social welfare growth is the sum of the growth in average income plus the contribution of changes in inequality. And the other thing perhaps to take away from this is that the growth in social welfare is very similar to the growth in average income. So the green bars and the red bars were quite similar. And this reflects the fact that changes in inequality are quite small. So the contribution of changes in inequality to changes in social welfare are quite small. And that's again, this seems consistent with the first graph that I showed you. So in terms of things that we still have to do, we still have to actually calculate the deflator for the SIN welfare measure. So I forgot to say that at the moment, we're simply deflating the SIN measure and the one minus Gini, the inequality component by the democratic measure, as that seems the best thing to do rather than using the plutocratic measure. But we do need to actually calculate a SIN deflator. We can also think about doing a more formal decomposition and also a further decomposition that separates out the effect of price and quality changes on inequality. And then we also plan to assess the importance of secondary redistribution of income. So the effect of tax and benefits, for example, in the national accounts data that we've allocated to households. So in conclusion, the first point really is that price indices are specific to social welfare functions. And so things like the Gini coefficient are regularly used. But if they're going to be used as a But if they're going to be used as, as, as a component of an indicator of social welfare, then we really need to use the appropriate price index. I was showing that a log normal income distribution with the log normal income distribution, there's quite a, a good concordance between the Atkinson and sin welfare measures. And at the moment, it seems that changes in social welfare due to inequality changes are generally quite small compared to the variation that comes from changes in average income growth. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew, for your insights. As of now, no Q and A or no questions have come through. So if you have a question, please put your name and your affiliation in the Q and A box. And then I will call your name and you will be unmuted. And I will just give it a minute. So any questions? I, until now, nothing came through. Or would you rather ask Andrew via email?
Very welcome to send any questions via email.
Andrew, this is Sean. I just wanted to ask, what, what's been the biggest challenge in this work? Is it, is it conceptual or is it other things that have been out of your control perhaps?
I mean, in this particular piece, I mean, it's, it's really quite early on. So to be honest, we haven't been working on this for very long. I mean, I mean, in terms of the previous work that kind of lies behind it. Yeah, I mean, there was, there was quite a lot of conceptual difficulties in, in, in some of the work allocating national income. And obviously quite a lot of empirical challenges in doing, for example, the imputation to allocate things such as interest and dividend, dividend income to households and also pensions.
Thank you. Thanks. I believe if there are no more questions, I believe that I'm going to take the reins in terms of chairing now from Teresa. Thank you, Teresa. And thank you, Andrew, for that really interesting presentation. Please do forward any questions to, to Andrew Martin, if you have any following this. So we're going to move now to the last speaker for this session. And it is Teresa from Frey University. Is that how you pronounce it, Teresa?
Frey, Frey University means basically the free university, the West Berlin University.
In Berlin, yes. Okay. And you're going to be again looking at distributional national accounts and looking at this in terms of inequality in Germany. So, so over to you.
So thank you, Sean. I hope you can see well. So I would like to present, or should introduce you to our first results of our distribution of national accounts analysis for Germany. We've, we have focused our work now on one very defining inequality in Germany, the one between East and West. That's why our, our title changed a little. We call our work in progress now, When Capitalism Takes Over Socialism, Missing Capital Income and East-West German Income Inequality. And this is joint work with Stefan Bach and Charlotte Bartosz, both at the I W Berlin. And basically, our work is motivated by two main questions. The first one being, how has inequality evolved since the reunification of Germany, so since 1990? And we want to look at inequality and what happened in the distribution from the bottom, from the poorest to the richest, to the top. And the second question motivating our work is the long run consequences of the German reunification. So there has been a broad literature on the legacy of socialism or the legacy of the German separation. So exploring differences in behavior, differences in economic and political outcomes due to the separation, the 40 year separation of Germany. We would rather look at the legacy of the German reunification. Because the German reunification came with large privatizations and investments mainly from West, Western investors into East Germany, buying with the firms, the formerly public firms and real estate. And our question would be, how did this privatization shape the income distribution even today? And to answer this question, we take the tool of distributional national accounts. And we combine text data and service at the micro level with the national accounts at the macro level. And so we can construct a long run series of the distribution of national income. National income being a macroeconomic concept, basically comprising all incomes received by residents of the country. Or also, if you go to the regional level, by residents of the region or federal state in Germany, for example. And with this analysis, we can cover the entire distribution from the poorest to the richest, riches, which is different to the former income inequality studies, which mainly focused on top incomes. And we can build up on a series of studies, which started with a seminal study by, study by PKT Sess and Suckman in 2018, who conducted the full DINA for the US. Recently, the new DINA guidelines have been released. They're all the, or the team of the World Inequality Lab put together all the expertise, how to build DINA in a consistent way for different countries with different data sources. So take a look at this if you're interested in, in the DINA. And there have been a series of country studies already. So you might ask, why another country study? But I think the cool thing about our study is that we not only use national accounts, but we also use regional accounts to shed light on inequality along an important dividing line still in Germany, the one between East and West Germany. So basically, in this paper, we want to develop the distribution of national accounts method further to adopt it to the regional level if possible. And we think this is a powerful tool to compare the income distribution and also the income composition between for us, East and West German residents, but you could also imagine other groups or other regions. And we basically find that there's business incomes from especially unincorporated business highly concentrated at the top. So this is normally called the German Mittelstand, but the German Mittelstand is these businesses that have high profits or not in the middle of the distribution at all, they're at the very top. And we also find that East Germans are underrepresented still, even 20 and 30 years after the reunification. And they are underrepresented at the top of the income distribution. And we link this to the fact that they have substantially lower capital income. And with capital income, I don't only mean dividends, but I mean incomes from businesses and especially big businesses like partnerships and quasi corporations. So how do we substantiate our argument? So we use triannally issued micro personal income tax data from 1992 to 2014. But here I also have to say that we are still waiting to get a lot of results cleared. So we, I can only show you results for two years, for 1998 and 2007 now. Because we are still waiting for the results for the other years, but I think I can already show you a lot with this. And we link this micro personal income tax data with household surveys, namely the German socioeconomic panel. And this with the national account series publicly available from the German statistical offices, namely the sexual accounts and as I said before, the regional accounts that cover, that are basically the national accounts for each federal state. And to go a little further into what we, I will just walk you through what we did. So we first take income tax microfiles and bring them together with survey data. And from the survey data, we only take the non-filers. And the aim of this exercise is to produce a data set that covers 100% of the population of 20 years and above. In the second step, we impute tax exempt labor and capital incomes, like imputed rents, but also retained earnings. We use the national accounts aggregates and distributions from surveys to get to 100% of net national income here. And from this, we can build from this very holistic data set, we built the income concepts laid down in the DINA guidelines. And I will come to those income concepts like pre-tax factor income and pre-tax national income in a minute. And with this, we can analyze the distributions of those incomes for East and West Germany, as we do, and their composition. Our observation unit is the individual and we take the equal split assumption. So we say that married spouses split their income 50/50. And with this, I would like to come to the income concept we use in the distribution of national accounts methodology. The first one being pre-tax factor income. And pre-tax factor income is basically the sum of primary incomes from labor and capital. So it includes gross wages, salaries, social insurance contributions and capital incomes like interest, dividends, rental income, computer trends and also business incomes of the household sector. And we also redistribute the household share and corporate income. The problem with pre-tax factor income is that it is very sensitive to the aging of a society. So basically, all the pensioners getting public pensions will have zero pre-tax factor income. That's why the benchmark series in most DINA studies is the pre-tax national income. And this is basically you're taking pre-tax factor income, reducing it by the social insurance contribution and adding back only the social insurance benefits. So only benefits you're eligible to because you contributed to a social insurance scheme, like public pensions or in Germany, the employment insurance scheme one. And I don't want to go into detail with the post-tax national income because we don't use it in the study. But I want to stress that all those income concepts add up to 100% of net national income. And so can be linked to the national accounts and to macroeconomic growth. And with this walkthrough, the methodology, I would like to go right into our results. Here you can see the income shares of pre-tax national income from 1998 to 2007. As I said before, we only got cleared with those two years or, and we are still waiting for the other years from 1992 to 2014. What we can see though is that during those only nine years, there has been quite a polarization in income distribution, distribution happening within, especially at the outer edges of the distribution. So in the bottom 50%, whose share went down from 21% in 1998 to only 15% in 2007. While the middle classes or the upper middle classes better. So the P 50 to P 98 basically stay quite stable or the income shares stay quite stable. Who gains most are the top 1%. They gained from a share of 13% in 1998 to 21% in 2007. So we see this polarization and to go more into detail what this means or where it might come from, we look at the composition of pre-tax factor incomes. So here you can see the bottom 90% of the distribution of pre-tax factor income by deciles. And on the Y axis, we normalize the Y axis to 100, 100 being the average income. The average income of the whole distribution. So basically, one could say, for example, for P 80 to P 89, that this desert on average burned 1.7 times the average income because it stands at 170 in our Y axis. And then you can see a lot of colors indicating which incomes dominate those deciles. And you can see that probably expectedly that the bottom 90% are dominated by increasing labor income, so gross wages and social insurance contributions. Only in, in the last, in the P 80 to P 89, we see a smaller share or a rising share of sole proprietorship to small businesses, small business incomes. And when we go to the P 90 to P 99, we see that wage or gross labor incomes like wages are stagnating. And this incomes from sole proprietorships start to play an increasing role here in light blue. And this is a cool detail about our data set that we can actually discern business incomes into two groups based on the legal form. So we have for, on one side, we have the sole proprietor. So, so incomes from sole proprietors and sole proprietors is a group of legal forms basically for small firms. Because as a sole proprietor, you have full liability of your profits and losses. And if your company goes insolvent, you go insolvent as well. So usually only people with a small business with very little employees take this legal form. And so we can identify the big businesses, which are incomes from partnerships or partnerships or quasi corporations. So other legal forms with limited liability. And we can see that in the P 90 to P 99, it's basically the small businesses gaining shares in the income composition, but only with P 98, we see that here in orange, incomes from partnerships and quasi corporations and their retained earnings are on the rise. And when we go to the top 1% and especially to top 0.1%, we can see that those business incomes from, for big companies, unincorporated businesses though, so they are not listed, dominate the whole picture. So here we can see that the top 0.1% on average earn 500 times the average incoming to 2007. And we see that they earn their income dominantly from unincorporated businesses. Those businesses, as I said before, are often called the German Mittelstand. They are closely held and we see that they are very concentrated at the top. And with this key takeaway from, from the national analysis, that business incomes are highly concentrated at the top and they are coming from unincorporated businesses. I would like to go to our second question, which is the question about income inequality between East and West Germany. So in 1990, Germany was reunified and basically two countries came together. One who, which has experienced 40 years of capitalism and one that has experienced 40 years of socialism. And this unification went along with the currency reform and a large scale privatization of East German firms and also real estate. And when you look here, we, we computed basically the average net national income per capita for each of the 16 federal states in Germany for 2018. And basically you can still see the former border. So while the West German federal states have a net national income per capita of between 25,000 and 35,000 euros. The East German federal states, for this part, only have a net national income per capita of between 15,000 and 25,000 euros. And we also see this income gap when we look at the representation of East Germans in the national income distribution. So here we plotted the share of East Germans or East German residents in the income distribution of pre-tax national income. The blue line shows the average share of East Germans in the overall population of 1998. So it was 21% then, it lowered down to around 20 decade later. And we can see that there is some convergence. So we see that from 1998 to 2007, East Germans lowered their share in the bottom 50% of the national income distribution and increased their share in the upper part of the income distribution. But still we see that East Germans are highly underrepresented at the top of the distribution, especially in the top 10% and in the top one, where they only make up around 11% instead of 21%. Which is the average of the whole, of the whole population. And to explore this phenomenon further. And to explore this phenomenon further, we again want to look at the income composition. And so we plot here, again, for the, we basically to, to plot this picture or to plot this graph, we computed two income distributions, one for West Germany and one for East Germany separately. And then we compare the bottom 50 of the East and the West German distribution and their income composition. And we can see for 2007 that there's a large income gap between the bottom 50% of West Germans and the bottom 50% of East Germans. West Germans earned on average, the bottom 50% of West Germans earned on average 11,000 euros per year in 2007, where East Germans earned around 6,000 euros. And we can see that this is mainly driven by a huge gap in labor income, so in gross wages and employer's social insurance contribution. So, so basically, gross labor incomes, while capital incomes don't play a big role. And labor incomes are very important also for the P50 to P90, so I don't want to look at this. And I will go straight away to the top 1% income composition of Western East Germany. So, here again, we see the average income per capita in current euros for 2007 for the top 1% of Eastern West Germans. And again, we see a huge income gap. So, while West Germans in 2007 in current euros were earning around 750,000 euros, East Germans were earning a little less than 400,000 euros. And we can see that the reason for this huge gap is quite different from the bottom 50. Because gross labor incomes hardly play any role in the gap. Also, small businesses like sole proprietors have quite similar shares in the income distribution of Eastern West Germany. But what is making the difference is dividends and business incomes from those large and unincorporated businesses, social incomes from partnerships or quasi corporations. So, basically, businesses that are unincorporated, that are closely held, that often have subsidiaries and are highly profitable, we can see here. And that's why we talk about the missing capital income. Because it seems like that the underrepresentation of East Germans at the top comes exactly from missing out on these business incomes. And so, our next step would be.
Teresa.
Five minutes?
Yes, five minutes.
Okay, thank you. And so, the next step would be to inquire the reasons for this different income composition. And we have seen that business incomes are highly concentrated at the top. And as it seems in this picture, also highly concentrated geographically in West Germany. And it might be two reasons, two obvious reasons. So, the very well-known reason is that West Germans had several generations to accumulate this business wealth, wealth, while most East Germans started anew in the 1990s. So, it makes sense that they only have small businesses in the legal form of sole proprietorships. But there's another perspective that we would like to investigate further. And this is during the privatization, many West Germans bought firms in East Germany. So, this privatization in 1990s, basically from 1992 to 1994, privatized 15,000 formerly public companies in East Germany through the Treuhand Institution. And more than 70% of these East German firms were bought by West German investors. Most of them already had businesses, and they invested in businesses in East Germany that are linked to their businesses, like as a supplier, for example. So, the question here that emerges is, might this have fueled a further concentration of business wealth and business incomes? The design of this privatization, might this have fueled further concentration of business incomes? And with this, I actually would already like to conclude. I hope I could show you that the distribution of national accounts methodology is a powerful tool to investigate income inequality at the national level, but also at, for us, the regional level, and to inquire also possible drivers of those regional intra-country inequalities. And we find still persisting gap between Eastern West German residents in labor incomes, which is quite well explored, but also in capital incomes, which is a new perspective. And we find that East Germans are underrepresented at the top and link this to the substantially lower business incomes and the substantially lower incomes from partnerships and quasi corporations of the German Mittelstand. And we, our next step would be to pinpoint further the effect of the privatization on this pattern we found here. So, the missing capital incomes for East Germans and the highly concentrated capital business incomes for West Germans. And I would like to thank you, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you very much, Teresa. I don't see any questions yet, at least on my display here. Does anyone have any questions for Teresa? Canya, you have your hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation. I guess I just have a question about, I know that you're just looking into the higher end and why the East Germans are underrepresented in that 1%, but I was wondering about the labor incomes. Like, what do you think is behind the persisting, like, difference between the labor income? Because obviously, there's free movement. And why do you think that the labor incomes haven't equalized as of yet between the East and West?
Oh, I think there's a broad literature actually on this. I think it has different reasons. First of all, in the 1990s, basically, there was a huge unemployment shock. So, basically, labor market biographies were, for many people, I think at some point, 40 people, 40% or 50% of the population were disrupted, and that makes the difference. And also, there's a lower, still a lower labor productivity in East Germany, and this is well-known. So, there are programs to actually build or incentivize firms coming to East Germany and building their plants there. And, and so, increasing the labor productivity, like high-tech firms or something like that. But it's still, the labor productivity did not catch up yet.
I have another question, if I can, if there aren't any others. It showed, when you showed the picture of the, who had the highest incomes, it seemed like actually the concentration of the higher labor incomes was in the South, South Two States. And I was wondering what, what you think that, that is driving that specific trend?
They, yeah, the, the two southernmost federal states are also a little special, because they have, I think, a high concentration of of firms like car industry in Bavaria. So, there's Munich, which is a center for, for many firms. And in Baden-Württemberg, you have Stuttgart, which is a, like, basically a place where a lot of international firms also reside. And they have, I think, also a lot of, like, very big businesses. Like, when, when you think about the German economy, you think about engineering, you think about car industry, and this is, there are a lot of those firms in the South.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Canya. We, we also have a quest, two questions, actually. One from Warren, Warren Oliver. Berlin as a special case, question mark. I don't know if you want to add to that question, Warren?
I think I've got the unmute off. I just was curious, the extent to which Berlin causes complications, because it is itself a composition of, of East and West, or socialist and capitalist. And also, Berlin's sheer size, I mean, London clearly distorts a lot of figures when you look at Southern England. And I just was curious whether you were finding complications from Berlin.
So, we label Berlin as East Germany in our analysis, because we cannot divide Berlin in itself. But as of now, it doesn't cause a lot of problems, because basically, Berlin was, was not, like, West Berlin was not like a strong, a place of, of strong industrial or economic development before the reunification. Basically, you actually had to incentivize people to go there by publicly subsidizing wages until the, until the reunification. So, there's, it didn't, I think now it started catching up, but the time period we are looking at, so until 2014, I don't think it would cause us any problems, because it's rather still an East German federal state.
Thank you, Teresa. And yes, we have one from Helen as well, Helen Hussen. Asking, again, on the map that you have there, I think, do other inequality measures show such a stark divide? Or is this a novel contribution? Feel free to come in with any further details, Helen, on that, if you want.
So, so if, I can also try to answer the question from that. So, it's about, if that's a novel finding. So, the map in itself, probably not. And there's a lot of, there's quite some studies, especially on, on the convergence of labor incomes between East and West Germany. Basically, also within the DIW from colleagues of the DIW Berlin. But it's much harder to pinpoint the role of capital incomes. Because capital incomes are highly underrepresented in the survey data. And also, even though the German sub is a very good survey data and the best probably we have, they are highly underrepresented when you put the survey data and the text data in comparison. So, I, I think our contribution here is really to look at the role of capital incomes. And I think that this also poses the question if, because it's unearned incomes, it's not due to labor power. It poses the question if conversions in the future is actually possible with a highly divided or highly different business incomes and capital, thus capital ownership, basically. It's an indicator of capital ownership in East and West.
Okay, I think that that's all the questions that we have on Teresa's presentation. So, with that, I think we can probably bring this session to an end, unless you wanted to say anything else, Teresa?
Oh, no. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present you.
Thanks to you too. So, thanks to all the panelists, and, and of course, thanks to all the attendees as well for sending through questions and asking questions and sparking the debate. So, once again, thank you all. We are five minutes early, so I think we've done quite well time-wise as well. So, have a good rest of the day and enjoy the rest of the conference. Thank you very much.